Good evening, everybody. I'm John Rowe, Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, and welcome to the Tuesday, September 22, 2020, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council, which I'm now calling to order. This is a virtual meeting. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yeah.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Glover?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Mayor Rowe?
Here. As I stated, this is a virtual meeting in accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 virus, his executive order number 51, which he signed on March 12, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council. And due to this pandemic, which continues in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we're holding this meeting of the Portsmouth City Council by video conference today, the 22nd day of September, without a quorum present in the city council chamber. We're doing this in an effort to reduce the likely spread of the COVID-19 virus. And this is in conformity with City Council Resolution 2020-21 and 2020-184. Each city council member is participating from their home or some other remote location. And I'm in the city council chamber. This meeting is being livestreamed, and once it's concluded, it'll be available for viewing also through the normal process where the city manager posts such videos of the city council meetings. And with that, our first item of business is the approval of minutes. And we'll do this with a single motion. We have two sets of minutes. We have a special meeting that was called at 12 noon on September 8, 2020, and the minutes of a regular meeting that started at 5:00 PM. Both of these meetings were virtual, September 8, 2020. Is there a motion to approve both sets of these minutes?
Move adoption.
Sarah, second. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We will vote. All of our votes will be a roll call, oral vote. Once we get to the point where we're ready for the question, I'll ask the city clerk to call the vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye, opposed, nay. And so we're ready for the question, which is the approval of these two sets of minutes. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. Thank you. We have three presentations. And let me say before we go further, we're going to need a closed meeting at New Business so that we can consider appointments to boards and commissions. At that time, I'll ask the city clerk to read the motion and then ask for a motion in a second. If the motion passes, we'll go and close a meeting to discuss appointees to boards and commissions. After we finish that, we'll come out if we have any appointments to make to our boards and commissions. We'll consider that at that time. With that procedure behind us, our first, our next item is presentations. We have three. And I call upon interim City Manager La Force Pace for the first item, collective bargaining briefing. Mr. Pace.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council.
You're mooted, I think.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. You're... We'll call on Mr. Pace for the collective bargaining.
Yes, you have the floor, sir. Thank you. Derek Challenger of our office will be presenting this this evening. He's a rising star in our office and very, very competent. I defer to him for his presentation.
Good afternoon. This is Derek Challenger, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council, members of City Council. I'm going to give a presentation on local public employee collective bargaining. Next slide. It permits local governing bodies to legally recognize and bargain with a labor union or other employee association as the exclusive bargaining agent of their employees and to collectively bargain in intercollaborative bargain agreement with respect to any matter of their employment by ordinance or resolution. However, this law does not require localities to recognize any bargaining agent or permit bargaining at all. Next slide. The effective date for this legislation on public employee collective bargaining is May 1, 2021. I know the last meeting, there was some discussion about other localities that are doing this process. And obviously, the date doesn't become applicable until May 1, 2021. But I sent out a request on the local government attorney's list serve, and I heard back from several jurisdictions in Northern Virginia who are planning on creating an ordinance to this effect. And there's other jurisdictions in the state of Virginia that's also looking to do this as well. Next slide. Just some guidelines. It's not applicable to all. For instance, it's not applicable to elected constitutional officers or their employees, meaning sheriffs, Commonwealth attorneys, circuit clerks, treasurers, commissioners of revenues. They're not impacted by this legislation. Next slide. As is the law now, no striking is permitted. Any local government employee who engages in a strike may be terminated from employment and banned from reemployment by the Commonwealth or any Virginia public body for a year. Next slide. This is in response to the question of what happens if May 1, 2021 comes by and we don't do anything? We don't create an ordinance? We don't do anything? So in that situation, the city will be compelled to vote to adopt or not to adopt within 120 days of receiving certification from a majority of its employees in a unit considered by such employee to be appropriate for collective bargaining that those employees wish to be represented by a union. That still doesn't require the city to adopt the resolution. It is required that there is a vote on the resolution. Next slide. The only other thing I wanted to mention is the only express content requirements for any local ordinance or resolution or collective bargaining is it has to provide procedures for the certification and decertification of exclusive bargaining representatives, including reasonable notice and the opportunity for labor organizations to intervene in the process of designating an exclusive representative of a bargaining unit. So again, just to recap, the law goes into effect on May 1, 2021. It will permit local governments to recognize labor unions or employee organizations to act as an exclusive bargaining agent for its employees. But it does not require a locality to recognize any bargaining agent or permit bargaining at all. There's no striking is permitted. And finally, in the event that the city does not do anything, after May 1, if a majority of employees certify that they would like to be considered for collective bargaining, then the city will be required to vote to adopt or not to adopt a resolution to this effect. Any questions or comments?
Ladies and gentlemen, do you have any questions for Derek?
Yes, Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you for the presentation. What was the reasoning, I guess, with the constitutional officers who were not included in this because they are state employees rather than city employees or not confined by a labor union?
Correct. It's the distinction between city and state employees. The law itself doesn't give a whole lot of explanation as to why that's the case, but it's clearly because of the distinction between city and state employees.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Thank you. Mr. Challenger, we have a resolution on the latter part of our agenda tonight authorizing and directing the city manager and the city attorney to sort of move forward with this and convene a work group and bring back a resolution, all that. Are you comfortable with that resolution?
Yes. I'm very comfortable. No, I'm comfortable with the resolution. The resolution in essence requires the city manager, city attorney to create a work group. And the work group includes attorneys, labor, as was human resources. And we put to come together to come up with a ordinance or resolution and to consider that issue and bring it back to City Council. And obviously, there is a very detailed process that has to spell out all of the steps that's required. And the ordinance resolution requirements are very minimal. That's in the statute. So in other words, each municipality has the opportunity to craft their own ordinance. So the state doesn't dictate very much specificity as it relates to the requirements. So the work group would come up with a model ordinance for us to present to City Council. So I have no problems at all with the resolution that was submitted.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, we have this resolution under items submitted by City Council. Any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Challenger.
Thank you.
Very good presentation.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is on the City Council meeting location. Mr. Pace?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor, Deputy City Manager. Okay, good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of council. As requested by City Council, we've assessed the City Council meeting options for your consideration and discussions. We continue to operate under the state and local emergency declarations due to COVID-19. In developing these options, great consideration was given to minimizing potential negative public health impacts, and therefore, full consideration has been given to following CDC and State Health Department guidance related to public meetings and personal contact. Just mentioned before I get started, for interview that have perhaps visited the first floor of City Hall during our early voting period, you'll see the kind of care it takes to ensure the public is properly spaced out, meeting all their social distance requirements, again, to make sure everybody, both public staff, is able to move about in a safe manner. And so with that, I'll move on to the presentation, as we mentioned. And if we go to the next slide, please. As I mentioned, we have developed four alternatives for City Council to consider tonight. There may be other variations of this you might want to consider and talk about. We'll start the first one. I think the first one is one you're pretty well aware of. That's our status quo option. And as you're aware, this is where City Council is operating from various remote locations. There's no in-person public to view or participate in the meetings. Meetings are livestreamed via the city's webpage, YouTube, Facebook. There's no television coverage, our PCTV coverage. For the most part, public comments have been submitted primarily prior to the meeting via either mail, email, or voicemail. And as you're aware, electronic and voicemail comments have been submitted during the meetings have been accepted and put on the City Council record. And as you're aware, we're also now allowing citizens to preregister and to comment via telephone on specific agenda items or as non-agenda speakers. So that's really option one. That's maintaining the way you're currently operating. So we go to the next slide. This is option two. This is again another virtual meetings type. This is a type of meeting we were originally looking at back in the maybe March and April timeframe. Early on, we weren't so, maybe even earlier than that, we weren't so sure how extensive the issue with the COVID-19 pandemic was going to go. In this, in this case, what we would be proposing in the option two is that you would have council convene in the council chamber with the required staff in here. We'd be following distance separation protocols, which means, you know, all of the council members could not be sitting at the dais together. We'd have to have some seated down in the front. Within this room, the council chamber, we'd have approximately 14 persons, a combination of council and staff members. Face covering is to be required when entering, and at any time where proper distance separation cannot be maintained. Again, there'd be no in-person public in the room. To view or participate, we're continuing to livestream via the city's webpage, YouTube, and Facebook. And again, there'd be no PCTV broadcast. And as you know, that's one of the requirements, so you can be able to look at your computer screens to track along with what's going on. And once again, the public comments can be submitted prior to the meeting via mail, email, voicemail. Comments, you know, submitted electronically or voicemail during the meeting are accepted for the record. And again, citizens can preregister to comment via phone on specific agenda items or as a non-agenda speaker. As you're aware, that'll be happening tonight's meeting. So that's option two. Option three is really the first option. We go to the next slide, please, where we start to bring the public into the, into the room. In this case, we're going to still talk about utilizing the council chamber. Distance separation protocols would remain in effect. Again, face coverings required to come into the public building. In this case, we'd have council members and staff, again, in the chamber. We would add an additional sergeant-at-arms into the room, taking our number of people in the room to 15. If you were to want to go this route, at least during the early stages of this, we would recommend the meeting time change be moved to 7:00 PM. Again, as you're aware, we have early voting activities are going on in the City Hall lobby. Those run between 8:00 and 5:00 during the day. And of course, anybody who's in the building, you know, right at 5:00 o'clock is allowed to stay in until they complete the voting. We would want to not have people come to the council meeting and people waiting in line to vote, as well as any staff in the building that are leaving. That would be quite a congested thing at 5:00. We would try to do all of that at 5:00. So we would recommend the council, the council go back to its normal meeting time of 7:00. And that would allow council to have a work session at 5:00, so your work session items could be returned. In this case, the recommendation would be doing the work session in a virtual, in a virtual mode. And again, since that is a process of... You're getting that? Okay. All right. I think some sort of issue here. In any event, going back to the public participation part of this, we would have limited attendance due to our distance separation protocols. Public seating within the council chamber would be about 30 seats. Each seat would be pre-selected to note what seats are available to make sure we can ensure our distance separation protocols are met. And once again, people will be required to wear masks unless they're participating as a recognized speaker of the City Council. And then we have our, our operating rules for this would be all public attendees would need to preregister to reserve a seat. If there are public hearing items, we would recommend that applicants and speakers receive first seating priority in the room to make sure your public hearing speakers are available. The next priority would be preregistered speakers on listed agenda items. They would get, again, second. And again, we're working until the number of seats available in the room are taken. Anything left over would be allocated to anybody from the public who wanted to attend but was not participating as a speaker. The recommendation for non-agenda speakers would be to queue them outside of the room. They'd be distance separated. And this is what happens in many of the other localities around us, where non-agenda speakers would come in the room, they would take their time to speak, and then they would exit the room. And that allows us to not have to deal with people moving around in their seats, having to clean seats in between people, you know, sitting and leaving. And that's a way to handle whatever size of non-agenda speaker list you were to get for that meeting. And then, and anyone from the public who attends the meeting would be assisted as they would be finding a seat. They'd be assisted in leaving the chamber, using the elevators to ensure that all of our distance separation protocols are maintained. And like you're aware, our maximum number of people in an elevator in the building is two. And so we would want to work to make sure that we had no more than two people at a time going through the elevators, so that we have people to safely exit the building and, again, maintaining our, our social distancing protocols. Next slide, please. Also mentioned, if you're, if you're in this option three, this would allow you to be, go back to your PCTV platform, so you'd have next day viewing of the, of the meeting as you have done. But we'd also continue the livestreaming of that for the general public. I think from our conversations here, the public's gotten used to seeing the council live, and so we would recommend you continue to livestream. Because we'd have non-agenda speakers in the building, we'd plan to broadcast the council meeting closed circuit to the televisions that are in the lobby areas in the, in the building, both here on the sixth floor and the first floor, so that if we are queuing people up to speak, they'd be able to watch the meeting, listen to the meeting, and we'd be able to efficiently move people up and into the council chamber if they're a non-agenda speaker waiting to speak. We continue to allow people to, require people to preregister to comment as non-agenda speakers, obviously with a limited seating capacity in the room at, again, approximately 30. There could be times, I don't know how, there could be times you're going to run well beyond, more people wanting to come to the meeting than you would have seats for. So we would continue to use that preregistration process. And we would just note for that, in addition to the staff that's in the room, we would need some additional staff to work those meetings to, again, provide building security since we have a live meeting going on, to assist people in using the elevators and moving throughout the building to get people in and out of the building. So that's, that's option three. Again, it's meeting in the council chamber, 30 citizens, and then with these sort of guidelines on how to manage public participation in the meeting. And then the fourth option, this goes back to, next slide, please, this goes back to the question the council raised at your last meeting about finding a location that was not up on the sixth floor of City Hall, did not require the use of elevators. We were looking around for sites. We ultimately decided it was best to stay out of school facilities because of their own protocols they were going through and using their facilities and plans they're making for opening and reopening because of the cleaning protocols we'd have to follow using these buildings. Keep in mind, after every one of these public meetings, these rooms have, will have to be sanitized after the meetings. And so that's just part of our normal cleaning routine we do, just as we're doing during the early voting downstairs. Option four, we ultimately took a look at the sportsplex. I like the sportsplex out there because it's a big open room. You've got good airflow. You've got plenty of new parking, all new HVAC systems, all the systems that you need to operate a meeting are there. We go through the same process. You'd have a 7:00 PM recommended start time, so you could have a work session at 5:00. The work session would be livestreamed. City Council would be seated in non-fixed seating on the gym floor, as would staff and the public. Based on our assessment of operating within that, within that one room, you probably have in the vicinity of 20 to 25 people in the room representing the city staff and the city council members and people assisting the public moving in and out of the room for the meeting. Again, we're still using distance separation protocols. Even in a large room like that, keeping people separated has a limiting factor on the number of seats, although larger than the council chamber. In that environment, you could seat approximately 45 citizens in that room. It's all non-fixed seating. We go through the same kind of preregistration to get people seated. And the, you know, we'd have that same, you know, priority of who gets seated first until we get everyone who's participating in an actual agenda item, either a public hearing or a regular agenda item, seated in the first two priorities. And then ultimately go back to the non-agenda speakers. In this case, because there's no lobby in the sportsplex, non-agenda speakers would, would need to be able to come into the room because of limited seating availability, or in a worst-case scenario, they may not even be allowed in the building. But hopefully, there's enough space. And if there weren't too many non-agenda speakers signed up to keep people, especially if you get into colder weather during the winter, not have people queued up outside. Next slide, please. A couple other of the operational issues for this option, again, at the sportsplex. In this case, you would be back on your PCTV platform. You'd be livestreaming to the public as we were talking about for option three. We would need to rent some audio equipment. Obviously, the gym is not set up for this type of meeting, so we need things such as microphones, microphone stand, speakers, an audio mixer, power cables, camera cabling equipment, some other things. We've got an estimate to do that. That would be in the vicinity of $725 per meeting for all the equipment rental. We did mention from being in there, the acoustics are not good in the sportsplex, like a lot of hard surface gym facilities like that, there's a significant amount of echo in the room, and that would present a bit of a challenge inside that room. And then we also noticed from having the meeting out there that with the new access, access points into the sportsplex parking lot on Lansing Avenue, there were some challenges to people actually finding their way to the parking lot to the building. And so we would recommend, we would do some additional signage and things of that nature to assist the public in, especially early on, in finding their way to the building. And then once they get to the building, making sure they get, you know, into the door and seated properly. In that case, we go through the same, same process where the public can continue to submit their comments prior to the meeting. Because again, recognizing the potential for limiting the number of people in the room, even though it's larger than the council chambers, but being limited to, you know, perhaps a smaller than number than might want to, certainly smaller than you've historically been able to fit in the council chambers. We would continue to allow people to preregister to speak or to submit their comments by voicemail electronically before the meeting or during the meeting for the record. So that's the summary. You have four options as we've looked at them. You can obviously make some different types of variations on how to do this. What we basically have created is, you know, the meeting to continue as you're currently meeting. We have the meeting where it's a virtual meeting, but all of council members come into the chamber. We have the third option, which is council image chamber with the public coming in, but but with a limitation due to social distancing of 30. And then the fourth option was obviously the sportsplex and a little bit larger public seating availability out there due to the, the building being larger, but that was the facility we looked at that had no elevator requirement, round-floor entry. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have or direction council would like to give.
Before I open the floor up for questions, Mr. Pace, do you and your staff have a recommendation among these four alternatives?
Well.
And I'm gonna ask the same question of the clerk too, because she is very much involved in the logistics of setting up our meetings. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, Mayor. Based on what we found in terms of important options, I thought that was possible.
This mic's not working.
Can you hear me?
Why don't you adjust your mic and, and we'll get, we'll take Deborah's comments Deborah?
Yes, sir. Members of the city council, my recommendation for the city council in moving forward is to have the council in the chamber with limited seats. One of the things we talked about is lining the citizens up on the first floor and having a camera shown on them down there. There's camera, there's a TV down there so they could see the council meeting. And actually, with a camera shown on them when they're ready to speak, they would not even have to come up here to the council chamber. But if council would wish for the public to come up to the chamber, then the limited number of, I think we said 20 or so people that would come to the chamber, of course everyone to pre-register, but that, we have the cameras, we have the equipment in here, and it would be less costly to have to provide microphones for the three council members down front than to have to have it available for all of council at a distant location. And by having it here in the council chamber, any additional resources or information that we may need for the council, we would have it readily available or could get to it quickly versus being at a distant location.
So, what you're recommending is option three with a slight variation.
Yes, sir.
In which council would be in the council chamber on two levels. Four sitting on the dais or three sitting on the dais and the remaining sit, sitting on the floor, spread out so that we have the proper distance between members of council and the public and the staff.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. We're making a technical adjustment to Mr. Pace's microphone. And sir, you've got the floor?
I concur.
But I think we picked up, you concur with the city clerks. Just, we'll, we'll take a slight pause here as Mr. Daniel Jones makes a technical adjustment Daniel, do you want to use this mic? We're still making the adjustments, and I thank everybody for your, for your patience. Because Mr. Pace is sitting about eight feet from me, you had indicated that you support the recommendation from the city clerk. Do you have any other comments you want to add to that?
I just wanted to add.
Yes, you may.
Mayor, just wanted to add the fact that when we looked at all of the production that would have to go into producing the meeting for that particular day, there's a lot of production that would have to go into that whereby staff would have to be off-location for the vast majority of the day, making sure that everything is in place, making sure that the venue was safe, and just making sure that everybody would be able to attend the meeting safely. Because of course, as our citizens would come, that's, that's our major concern, making sure that nobody would be, would contract the novel coronavirus. So, we totally agree with what the city clerk recommended, and we think that would be a better option for us all.
Thank you, sir. With, with that recommendation, I'll open the floor up for questions and discussion. I, I recognize, I see Councilwoman Simmons, this hand is up. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. I, um, I have to be honest, I'm not thrilled about coming into the council chamber, but only because of the air handling system in that old building. However, I think for those, I, I understand the why it works though, I get that. For those citizens who are not interested in using the elevator and coming up to the sixth floor, they have an opportunity, at least on the first floor, if we, if we do what, what Ms. White just suggested, to, to actually come into the building even in a wheelchair without needing to leave the elevator at all and staying on the first floor. And maybe we make a, a, a way for people to speak from the first floor that they don't even have to come into the chamber, if, if that is their pleasure. Because I'm not sure how many people are, are thrilled to be coming in the building and up the elevator and into the council chamber at all. As much as I want us to be together.
Sure. I, I see that Councilman Clark has raised his hand. Councilman Clark, you have the floor, sir?
Thank you. I was listening to all the options, and in my mind, I was kind of thinking of a combination of one and three. Because if we're that limited in the council chamber to try to keep everybody safe and the limits on the elevator, if we could still do it virtually but have a station set up on the first floor, because that's the goal for a lot of citizens to come back to speak to us. So if that could happen on the first floor, that would negate the cleaning of the, you know, the, well, I know it has to be cleaned anyway, but if it's only going to be 20 to 30 people, I don't know if the, the risk outweighs the benefit if we could still have a station set up on the first floor to allow citizens to speak on all of our items.
Thank you, sir. I see Councilman Moody's hand up, and then Councilman Glover. Councilman Moody, you have the floor, sir? You're muted, sir?
Okay, the, the ventilation system, have, have we had our health department weigh in on the risk of that system, reference, regarding the virus?
Deborah, do you have the answer to that?
Not that I'm aware of, sir. I do not believe we have.
I think before we would commit to that, I think it would be a good idea to have them weigh in on whether there's risk or not, reference the air quality and the spreading of COVID-19.
Okay. Good, good point. Councilman Glover, Shannon, you've got the floor, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with the option three. I like the idea also of giving folks the flexibility to be on the first floor, to engage council and also to view the proceedings in the chamber. It's, it's time that we move forward with all, all appropriate precautions, but I think that I'd, option three would be the one that I would sign up for.
I think we've got the microphone fixed with Mr. Pace. Mr. Pace, you've been listening to the conversation. A question was raised about, has the health department checked our ventilation system here to make sure in the council chamber in this building, make sure that it is adequate for COVID-19?
They have not as of yet. However, I, yeah.
To the mic.
They have not as of yet, although I did have a conversation with Mr. Wojcik last week relative to some things that they're doing in terms of repairing the building. Mr. Baldwin might want to speak with that because he's aware of the work that they'll be doing here in the building.
Mr. Baldwin?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. We can get some more specifics, but we have had the HVAC system in the building assessed. There's been some initial work done on it. There's some additional HVAC work that's in the, in the plans. I don't have that schedule right in front of me, but we are making upgrades to the city's ventilation system in the building, but that has not been completed as of this time.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Battle. Paul, you got the floor, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to look at all the parameters involved, but how many cases can be had in these six? Are we receiving? Do we have the ability to test those? Do we know who may possibly be the test and carrier? And above all, all the top doctors in the country have said, we haven't seen anything yet, wait until the second round comes. Do we think that the second round's not coming? I mean, the world's not going anywhere, and I understand there's occasions of folk wanting to speak and Paul Battle wanting to show his seats off and things like that. But we need to pay attention to what's being said. Again, there's a second wave coming, not guessing, we spoke about guessing about that. They said definitively. Now, you know they don't know everything about it. You know, they'll say, okay, well, if they're born, they say it's some carrier. So, are we doing the right thing for the sake of the public by tuning out some of the most important things that are being said? I mean, this, the world's not going anywhere. We don't need to run under a situation like this to accommodate anything but health and safety. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Very good point. Health and safety should be our priority. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments?
Yes, same comments. While we're all anxious to get back into the council chambers and to allow the public to be able to gather with us, I do like a combination of one and three, as my colleague, Clark, as Councilman Clark has stated. But, um, just want to make sure that, that we're doing the right thing by the public, and, and I do think that we need to take some precautions with the persons who will be entering on the first floor. I like the recommendation. I understand that our clerk's office puts a lot of work into getting our meetings on board and, and set up. So, as long as we're taking the right precautions, I'm willing to move forward with their recommendations.
The chair recognizes the city clerk again. Deborah, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. Just briefly, council members, tonight, we are moving to the next step in providing the public an opportunity to speak directly to the council members. We have made it so that they will be able to speak on the various items and speak as non-agenda speakers. Now, no, you're not going to see a picture, you're only going to hear a voice, but we have put in precautions to make sure that hopefully goes smoothly. It would be pretty much the same thing as if people were on the first floor. So if you want it to continue in the mode you're currently going, for now, allowing people to call in to speak, they have to pre-register and have them to call in to speak, you're going to get an example of how that will work tonight. So, if you do not want to have people on the first floor and for them to stay home, they have the opportunity, and we're trying to work through the logistics of, if you all want to be in the chamber, right now, you all seem to agree that you work well from being at distant locations. So, like we said before, there's a number of different scenarios that you all can use, but I do have to ask that you choose a scenario tonight, only because on October 13th, we have different things that are coming to you, and we have to do legal advertisements for those things. So we need a clear direction on what you want to do tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Everybody's commented, and I'll make my comments. I think that, you know, this is a serious virus, over 200,000 Americans have died, and we have been emphasizing health and safety and, and doing your part and our part to stop the spread. And it sounds like to me that no one is in favor, if I can summarize, for alternative four, that if and when we implement a alternative to allow the public to come into this building, that is alternative three modified. Deborah has indicated that she is looking for some direction tonight. I recommend that, given the status of this pandemic and that it's not under control yet, that we look at, if, if we implement alternative three, that we do it for the second meeting in October, not the first. And this allows us to address the questions that came up tonight about the ventilation system, to work out the fine tuning that's necessary that has been recommended by the city clerk and the city manager. And so with that, I, I recommend to my colleagues that we consider implementing alternative three, not before the 27th of October, if I'm looking at the calendar correct. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? Yes. And do you agree, Madam Clerk, with that recommendation? Does that give you?
Yes, sir. So just so I'm clear, we would remain virtual.
For the 13th?
And the public is not coming in, but they will be able to call in?
They will.
Like they're doing tonight. So basically, our meeting like tonight.
Correct.
For the 13th.
The 13th.
Looking at trying to bring the public in on the first floor on the 27th?
Correct.
Are we looking to have council come in on the 27th?
That's, that would be implementing alternative three.
Right.
And that's, that's correct. But, again, that-
Because you do know that council can still be remote.
Right.
And the public can come in on the first floor to be seen on a camera that could display for the council, and you all would not have to be in the building.
Right. Which is a modification of three. Paul's raised his hand. Paul, I recognize you, you've got the, the floor, sir, and you're muted.
Thank you. I, I'd just like to know what hardship that took the clerk under, what legal legality of loose impediments at this point. Can you explain this to me?
Yes, sir. The legal side of things is, we have public hearing scheduled for October 13th, and I'm just speaking for that particular meeting, that we have to do advertisements which require us to put the location of where the meeting is it's going to be and the time and that kind of thing. So, the virtual part is not a problem for the 13th, as long as we know that's what you're going to do. We have to have a location- We have to have a location, so if the location is virtual, but we're allowing people on the first floor, whatever way you all shape this, we can make it work. We just need to know how you want it set up.
Let me put, pose my question back to my colleagues. Um, is everybody comfortable with maintaining um how we are uh through the 13th, which is our first meeting in October, allowing speakers to speak to us in real time, either by telephone and if staff can work out a way that they can come to the first floor, that's great, do it by camera too. And then look at implementing alternative three modified on the 27th. Nate, I see your hand off, sir. You got the floor?
Uh, the one thing I was going to suggest is that could we come back at the end of this meeting and make a decision after we see how the call-in works tonight?
Sure.
This is the first time that we're hearing from the public.
That's a very good point. All right. Everybody comfortable with that? Let's go through the rest of the agenda, see how the speaking works, and at the end, we'll consider this under new business. All right. All right, let's move on. Our next briefing is on the CARES Act funding. Mr. Pace?
Mayor Vice Mayor, members of City Council, Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Mimi Terry, and the Human Resource Director, Elizabeth Gooding, will be making this presentation to you relative to CARES Act funding update.
Ms. Terry?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Vice Mayor, Council Members, Administration, Executive Team, and others. At council's request, I have been charged to provide a presentation of the CARES Act funding. Without further ado, I will begin my presentation. Next slide. The purpose of the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, which is what we consider as the CARES Act. The CARES Act provides for payments to state, local, and tribal governments navigating the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. The CARES Act established $115 billion Coronavirus Relief Fund. The city of Portsmouth received two allocations from the state totaling $16,471,724. Next slide. The first, the first allocation was received on June 1st. The second allocation was received on August 12th. The funding timeline parameters are March 1st, 2020 through December 30th, 2020. I just want you all to make a mental note that if the funds are not expended by December 30th of 2020, the unspent funds are required to be returned to the Treasury Department. The city manager organized a team to identify and manage the immediate needs of the city during the pandemic. The team also worked to ensure that the employees and the citizens stayed safe and protected as much as possible while practicing social distance. The interim city manager has expanded the team to now include the following: himself, deputy city manager, assistant city manager, myself, procurement administrator, human resources management director, and department heads. Next slide, please. Since the initial guidelines were provided for the localities to follow, there have been additional guidelines that have followed as well, that have been asked on what is allowable and what is not allowable under the CARES Act. The best way that I believe to address this was to provide two slides to show, in a brief description, what is eligible and what is not considered eligible spending of the funds distributed by the state for the purpose of providing relief to localities. Starting with the eligible expenditures, medical expenses are anything COVID-19 related and relevant, to name a few. We're having testing, treatment, and medical transport. Public health expenses to include communication, enforcement, expenses for acquisition and distribution of medical and protective supplies, disinfecting of facilities, sanitizing products, as well as personal protective equipment. Payroll expenses for public safety, health, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-19 public health emergency. Expenses of actions to facilitate compliance with COVID-19-related public health measures. This also includes food delivery to residents, seniors, improvement of telework capabilities, expenses related to maintaining county jails that relate to sanitation and improvement of social distancing. Expenses associated with the provision of economic support in connection with COVID-19 public health emergency. This provision includes expenditures related to grants to small businesses to reimburse them for the cost of business interruption caused by the statewide mandated closures. This also allows for local government payroll support. Any other COVID-19-related reasonable expenses, what we consider necessary. This expense is relative to what is deemed reasonably necessary to the function of government that satisfies the eligibility criteria. Next slide, please. So now we have the non-eligible expenditures. Expenses for the state share of Medicaid, damages covered by insurance, payroll or benefit expenses for employees who works, whose work duties are not substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. This is relative to departments that on a normal day of business do not have to respond to public health emergency. Uh, we have some examples in, you know, I'm not, I'm just examples. The golf course, some library, museums. Those are just a few examples of what that was trying to identify. Expenditures or expenses that have been or will be reimbursed under any federal program. I use this as an example. We have the Department of Social Services and the Department of Behavioral Health. The majority of their expenditures are reimbursed through the state for programs that they administer. It would be considered double dipping to use the CARES Act money for salaries that are reimbursable from the state or with federal dollars. That's just pretty much what that is explaining. Reimbursement to donors for donated items or services. I don't think that needs much explanation. Workforce bonuses other than hazard pay or overtime. In essence, this is interpreted as the city cannot consider the CARES Act as a pot of extra money to give to employees as its bonuses because they don't have the funds budgeted or available in the general fund. Workforce is identified as everyone in the city regardless of their position. Bonuses are not allowable, however, comma, the frontline hazard pay is, but is not considered a bonus per se. Frontline hazard pay is for those that do the services they provide and position they hold in the city to continue city services that cannot, that cannot practice social distances in order to perform their job duties. The requirement of the job places them in harm's way. Exposure to the environment in which they are required to work exposes them and leaves them vulnerable to the virus and, and are considered essential in the respect that city services must continue to move forward regardless of the state of emergency which we are in. Severance pay. You cannot use this to pay anyone that you are terminating, just so it won't come out of the general fund. Legal settlements, I think that's pretty clear. You can't use it for that. And those were your non-eligible expenses. Uh, can I have the next slide, please? Okay. Uh, just again, I just want to remind everybody that as a reminder, the funds cover March 1st, 2020, and they end on December 30th, 2020. Uh, I would like to address the categories, the budget expended and available. The numbers reflect what has been expended as of September 18th, 2020. The first portion of the allocation had to be spent as of June 30th, 2020, and the second allocation started as of July 1st. So let me go through the slides uh pretty quickly, or this. So what we have in the first category is public safety employees. So we budgeted about $8 million. That was a payroll expense for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services, and similar employees. Public health expense, we budgeted $1 million, and those were expenses for cleaning the buildings and anywhere that the, someone had actually contacted or contracted coronavirus. We spent, we cleaned about 25 times, give or take, uh, so that's pretty hefty. And also sanitizing, deodorizing, and just getting the building back up to par. Frontline workers hazard is paid. We looked about one point, we were expecting to spend about 1.8 million. So the frontline employees that were substantially provided services dedicated to COVID-19, that was about 1.6 million. Public assistance, citizens assistance grants, that's through economic development. Here we have spent, uh, this started, they really started the program in July. No, not that one. Okay, I'm sorry. This is the public assistance citizens assistance grant. This is the money for the citizens for housing and mortgage assistance. The state first gave social services a $450,000 allocation, then they came back and gave another $450,000. What that basically did was they increased the amount of money available through the state program. The city designated, designated a million dollars to say for anyone who can't qualify through the state program, we have funding for you to assist you in your housing. Supplies and non-capital other, those are for telework, computers, equipment, supplies, the things that we have to do to increase our capability to continue our workflow. Local business economic support was, is a million dollars that's kind of designated to economic development for small businesses. Again, they have been continuously getting applications for those dollars. I believe it's a $10,000 cap that you can request uh basically from economic development. And those expenditures are dedicated to that. CARES Act utility relief, there's 1.2 million dollars there for anyone who can or is having problem paying their utility bills. And we're talking about electric, gas, but they have to go through social services, so they are managing that program through the CARES Act. And then you have contingency. These are the dollars that are reasonably necessary to continue the function of government that the government, our government body, our city council can use to their discretion as long as they follow under the guidelines. So this money wasn't designated to anything specific, maybe overflow or in some areas that may have exhausted their funding. Next slide, please. So here, where do we go from here? We want to be able to prioritize the available funds. Monitoring funds to ensure all funds are expended based upon the guidelines set forth by the U.S. Treasury Department. We want to be able to identify the needs of the city which are allowable using CARES Act funds. As the state begins to open or reopen to the public, we need to be able to disinfect areas that are vulnerable and have been exposed by people that are not or have been diagnosed with the virus to prevent further spreading. We want to be able to determine how to spend the available balance of funds. The funds that have been allocated to public assistance grants, relief funds, and small businesses, the team will continue to monitor the dispersment of those funds to determine if there is an opportunity to dedicate the available funds to an area that could benefit from the use. In other words, by the end of November, funds have not been fully obligated for grant relief and relief assistance due to, are due to the state giving more dollars. In other words, a lot of times the state will go through their funding process, they have us do reports that they, that we have to submit, and what they'll ask is where, where have you spent those dollars? And if you have additional dollars, we can reallocate them to a locality that may need it. So what we want to be able to do is continue to review our funding, ensure that we are actually spending them according to the guidelines, and reallocating them to, with your discretion, to where we will need them or where there's a need. Assess the second round of frontline hazard pay for eligible employees. There is funding left in the contingency line that we could use to do a second round of frontline hazard pay for eligible employees that were deemed eligible but did not receive the pay in the first round. It is my understanding that it, it is the desire of council to have relative departments, inclusive of the Sheriff's Department, identify eligible frontline workers within their designated areas, following the guidelines which are justified in receiving frontline hazard pay with the intent of capturing those that did not receive it in the first round. I am hopeful that council will allow the team and the department heads to have discretion in addressing this as soon as possible to resolve and alleviate the calls and requests that you may be receiving. A report could be distributed to council identifying the number of employees affected as well as the final figures of what has been expensed through the CARES Act for the second round of frontline workers. The council members mentioned on the September 8th meeting that they wanted to reconsider a one-time thank you bonus to the employees that did not qualify to receive the frontline hazard pay through CARES Act. I would like to ask council's permission to explore the request by providing, through the interim city manager, a plan of action which would outline and identify the number of employees considered, three options or tiers for the council to make a determination, and a proposed date of dispersment of the payment to employees. I also want to inform council that this will have to be absorbed through the general fund. Next slide, please. So that concluded my presentation to council as it relates to the spending and the availability of CARES Act funding, and I will now divert, well, not divert, I will now refer to the Human Resource Management Director to cover the next slide, and then questions will come at that point.
Good evening. For the CARES funding distribution, you will see that for the COVID-19 frontline support for the initial distribution, as discussed, there was $2,000 given to full-time sworn public safety. We included our EMS, um, we included our 911 dispatchers. We also gave $1,500 to full-time general employees, this would be in waste management, employees in parks and recreation who were working with food distribution in support of the school closure, um, social services, also food distribution in support of the school closure, public works employees who were involved in the COVID-19 cleaning and sanitation activities, BHS nurses assigned to the methadone clinic, um, part-time general employees in those above-mentioned areas actually received half of that amount being $1,000 or $750 respectively. A total of 523 full-time employees, 53 part-time employees totaling 576 employees received the COVID-19 frontline support pay. the COVID-19 frontline support pay. The purpose of this slide was just to aid in the discussion as we decide how we are going to move forward. At this time, this concludes our presentation on the CARES Act funding, and we'll take any questions.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Pace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pace, uh, for this presentation. Now, I'll start off the questions by asking, um, it sounds like to me that, um, and I'm asking this question, that those, uh, fleet maintenance people whose responsibility is to keep, um, public safety vehicles, uh, running, uh, would qualify as a frontline, uh, employee. Is that correct?
I concur.
Trash.
And that would be the mechanics, the people in the parts room, the, the whole.
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah. So that's one of the frontline employees groups that would be eligible?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other questions, uh, Councilman Glover, you've got your hand up, and then Councilman Battle.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you guys for all the work that you put into making sure that these funds were el- eligible and, and dispersed to our employees. I know that they appreciated it. I, I wanted to ask the question of the original process of determining who is eligible. I see that there's an expanded list of department heads, um, city managers, assistant city managers, and, and the like involved in, in the new group that is going to be deciding, uh, where these hazardous pay funds are, are dispersed. Um, what, was there a disconnect when we first looked at this, um, in terms of not including all of those departments and department heads? And, and was that the reason why we expanded it? And the second thing is, I wanted to make sure that we include us, and help me understand, waste management, so does that mean the, the folks to pick up our, our garbage and maintain our food in that regard? And the folks that work in the waste management office? And lastly, I wanted to know is, the sheriff's deputies who are on the front lines of helping our citizens in the community, our elderly and otherwise, uh, were they included? And, and are they going to be included going forward? I know that's a lot, but I just need some further.
Okay. Let's, uh, let's take, uh, Councilman Glover's questions, I think there are three, uh, and if you'll answer one at a time, Mr. Pace.
Okay, Mayor, I'm gonna yield to, uh, Ms. Gooden and, um, Ms. Terry first, and after that, if there's anything else, I will, it'll come back to you, and I'll answer those questions for you.
Well, again, if, if your staff then can address them one at a time and identify the questions, so to make sure that we answer Councilman Glover's question. I think the first one was, um, was it an oversight to have a smaller team to begin with as opposed to an expanded team, is that correct, Mr. Glover?
That's correct, Mayor, and thank you.
Um, good evening, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm, uh, Councilman Glover, um, I don't think it was an oversight, I think it was a matter of the CARES Act is very new, I think it's all getting a different understanding and getting clarity in that regards. And, you know, when you work on any project, it's always good to reflect back and look for, you know, areas of improvement where you can engage a little bit further. And so that explains, explains a little bit more about expanding the team. May I go to the second? You're welcome.
Yes, that's, that, thank you.
The second question deals with waste management?
Yes. Um, for waste management, um, Councilman Glover, no, it did not include everybody in waste management, it excluded anybody who worked in an admin capacity, but those people who, you know, picked up our trash and those things, they did get that, but admin support employees did not receive the COVID frontline, um, 19 pay.
Councilman Glover, looks like you might have a comment, or do you?
Yeah, yeah, I did have a, and, and, and so, help me understand, the admin folks, does, do people that actually do the frontline work for waste management, do they come into the admin office? Do they have people coming into their space, uh, that could potentially contaminate or, 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 or bring in the virus with them? I'm just trying to understand, uh, how their day goes and, and what they are exposed to, perhaps.
Sure, I'll, I'll attempt to answer that question. I think as we look at the definition when it talks to substantiate, substantially or mitigating COVID-19, I am not quite sure if their offices were open. I would assume, and I will double-check this and get back with you, that their offices were, but would have been closed, and they just would have had contact with those employees that actually work in waste management. But let us do this, let me, um, go back, do some research, and we will, I will get that information to Mr. Pace to make sure I fully answered that question and did not leave out any, um, information there.
Right, because it's, 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 it's been brought to my attention that their offices were, were open and that they could have been potentially exposed from people coming in and out, um, of their offices, so.
And, and, okay, and, and the third question, which deals with, uh, the sheriff's department?
Sure. Um, dealing with the sheriff's department, um, I'm gonna say this, I, I think it's something that we definitely need to look into, I don't think it was a conscious decision to, um, to exclude anyone. Again, I think as we worked on the team and we talk about expanding, and when you go back to collaborate, we understand that, um, employees of the sheriff's department, you know, play a role in the community and play a role to our citizens, and that's why we're actually going to be, you know, looking at that. That's why we expanded the team, to make sure we cover all areas.
Well, well, if I could just follow up with the end of it, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And, and Ms. Gooden, I, I, I certainly appreciate your explanation, and I would agree, this being new to all of us, you know, we don't necessarily always get everything right, but you and your team have performed well, and, and everybody on the team, and I thank you for all of that, ma'am.
Thank you, sir, and I think, uh, Councilman Battle had his hand up, and then Councilman Moody.
The most disappointing thing, one of the most disappointing thing in life to me is how folk want money and want relief, but when they have the opportunity to do it, they don't do it. When this money first came down, I told the city manager, let's give everybody some money. The state, in its definition, completely give the money to, left it in a subjective manner, which is saying to us, we are lingered with this. We don't know the total scope of this virus, and that's why we're being in this. The folk that cut grass, the folk at the city garage, the sheriff's department, all that's a no-brainer. And everybody in this city, we're all in this together, and everybody should be, should have been included, because for mere fact that they have worked, and this thing is airborne, you have folk that transmit it, sanitation workers, I mean, I, I'm, I'm so let down by my city when they do things like this, and when I say things on the council and I get no support. The night that I said, hey, let's give everybody some money, everybody looked at me like I was the mob. The state meant for us to give this money to these people, they're not morons, they know that everybody's the mob. Whatever fund that we have, we need to get it together, we need to come back to the council, let us know what we're gonna do, or, Mr. Mayor, maybe we need to give them some direction after we get the, the total funding of the funding that's left. And I know you meant to, and I know you meant well, I'm not saying that, but it disturbs me when folk don't understand the realness together, and folk are greedy, want things for themselves and not for others. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Moody had his hand up, and then Vice Mayor, uh, Lisa Lucas Burke. Uh, Councilman Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed on the utility relief money, uh, that, uh, we have about 1.2 million, uh, left in that, we use it or lose it before the end of the year. How are we getting word out to people? I have a hard time believing that, uh, we've only, uh, only about $2,200, uh, dollars have been expended in that, uh, you know, given the number of people unemployed and suffering financially. If, if someone could explain how we, how we communicating word out in the community that that money i- is there, uh, for qualified folks?
Mr. Pace?
Yes, sir. Mr. Moody, um, some of the things that we've done to try to inform the public relative to these funds, uh, we have, um, printed flyers that social services and BHS has distributed those flyers, we've also put information on social media, we put, um, press releases on our website, um, we are also, just so you know, we, we just did a direct mail piece of a postcard that has the information on both sides that's gonna be distributed to all households here in Portsmouth. And so, um, everything that we're doing to get this information out to them, it's been a collaborative effort, we've also sent press releases to the media, of course, none of them picked up on it, but everything that we can do in terms of using all of our inventory to communicate this information, this is what we've been doing, and we will continue to do that up until such time where, um, those funds need to come back to the city to make sure that we are dispersing them so that the funds ultimately does not go back to the state.
Yeah, it'd be a shame if we have people that, uh, could use it and, uh, uh, they aren't aware, that, uh, having over $1 million left, that's, uh, uh, time running out on that.
Uh, thank you. I, I'm gonna recognize, uh, the Vice Mayor and then Councilman Glover, uh, because he's got his hand up, um, I wanna make sure that I give everybody a chance to speak at least one time. Vice Mayor, you have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I think applauding, um, our CFO, um, Ms. Terry and our HR Director, Ms. Gooden, on this work and coming back, uh, with these recommendations and looking at the chart, um, that was quite impressive. I think that, um, that should be something, well, I don't know how much, you know, the public is not watching, um, this live stream or will look at it later, I mean, that gives a clear, um, identification of how the funds have been allocated, but it looks like, um, there was about $10 million dispersed out of the $16,471, and approximately $6 million that remains, uh, uh, $5 million plus, um, that remains, uh, with that, and I know that the CFO mentioned that in order to give, um, take our consideration of the bonuses, um, that we have recommended for persons who were considered essential, who worked, um, every day and came in contact with someone, I, I don't agree with someone who was teleworking, um, from home, um, you know, being, uh, a recipient of any of these funds, but anybody who was considered essential, who had to come into their office and came into contact with anybody who, uh, was an unknown. Um, and then there's the concern about the persons who were affected, I mean, we, we, we know that some departments had to close down and there were some people who were affected, so, you know, um, they were, um, considered persons who, um, you know, should have been considered as well. Um, so I, I don't know, um, is it gonna be a vote, is it, or are they gonna come back to us with a report to show how many employees would be eligible for a bonus-type allocation? Um, and I understand that that's gonna come out of the, uh, the general fund, um, but I do agree with all of the other comments, um, about the sheriff's department and the waste, um, management, um, department, especially those persons who were working on the cars, because we received so many, uh, calls, uh, emails, and even meeting people out in the public, um, you know, um, who could just stop us and, and ask the questions. So, um, this, this chart helped to give us more information, um, which we had sooner, but now that we do, um, we, uh, have the opportunity to move forward with that, so thank you.
Thank you. And you asked a question that I'm gonna, uh, come back to in my summary, uh, to make sure we get every point. And before I go, uh, to Councilman Glover, I wanna make sure, uh, Councilwoman Simmons and Clark have a chance to speak if you have any questions, if you haven't spoken yet. None. Uh, Councilman Clark? None. Uh, Councilman Glover, you have the floor, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, one question I did wanna ask, and, and it's, it's kind of in the same line with what Councilman Moody was asking, uh, thanks for asking those questions, Bill. I wanted to know if there are income restrictions on the utility, uh, assistance, uh, because there may be some misconceptions in the community that you have to meet a certain income requirement to be eligible for those dollars.
Good question, Mr. Pace.
Um, Councilman Glover, what, what we did with the, um, utility, um, piece, the director of social services and BHS, they have a hotline where people can call in to get information to clarify what the, um, guidelines are to be able to apply for them, and the flyers that we, that we sent out, that we promoted, all of that information is contained there. So we have tried our best to make sure that they understand how these funds can be dispensed, and, uh, social services and BHS has been available to provide that information to callers that, that called in about the information.
Uh, thank you. Uh, embedded in the CFO's presentation was a question to council, uh, which was permission to go, uh, for the CARES Act team to work, uh, with the department heads to come up with an expanded list of those frontline employees that were not covered, and any other employees that, uh, uh, should be recognized but may not be covered, uh, that may, uh, if we want to cover them, uh, require a general fund expenditure. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, let's, let's do a consensus, is there a consensus of, uh, city council that we, uh, direct the city manager and his team to do just that and bring that back to us? That answers your question, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any, good. All right. I think we got everybody on board on that. Any further discussion? Councilman Moody, is your hand up?
Yes. Uh, this, this doesn't pertain to CARES, this doesn't pertain to, uh, CARES money, but, uh, just a reminder that council was due a report back, uh, in October on the retirees', uh, request of the $1,500, uh, uh, stipend.
Okay.
Just, just wanna make sure that's still on track.
Okay. All right. Good, good reminder.
Ms. Wood, we have not forgot that.
Any further discussion on CARES? I'm sorry. Any further discussion from my colleagues on CARES? You, you've got your homework assignment, Mr. Pace.
I got it.
All right. We're now at, um, city council rules, and Madam Clark, will you read the protocol for our speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Are we going with the five minutes, Mayor?
Well, let's, let's read that first, and then I'll ask council.
Okay. City council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. At the beginning of your five minutes, we ask that you make concise remarks. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the city council as a body rather than any particular member of city council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule decorum will be deemed out of order and removed from speaking.
Uh, thank you, ma'am. There has been some, uh, discussion. There has been some discussion, given the fact that this is a virtual me, meeting. Do we need to amend the speaking time from five to three minutes? What's the pleasure, council?
Mayor, I would like to move that we amend the time from five minutes to three minutes for these virtual speaking options.
Second. Second. Okay. The, the motion is to amend our speaking time from five to three minutes for the virtual meetings. Any discussion on the motion? We're ready for the question and this will be a roll call vote. And if you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye if you oppose, nay. And Madam Clark, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row.
Aye. While we're talking about speakers, I had indicated that we need a, a closed meeting to consider appointments to boards and commissions. Logistically, it's better to go ahead and go through the agenda and hear our non-agended speakers before we go into closed meeting. That way, our IT director can manage the technology better. And so if there's no objection, that's what we'll do. We're now at unfinished business and we're at item 20-198A, which is actually the consent agenda. And Madam Clark, will you read the caption for A, please?
Yes, sir. And Mayor, just before I do that, normally for consent agenda, you would deal with all the items, not hear speakers, but we have speakers that have requested to speak on a couple of the items. So, are you going to handle them individually?
Yes, ma'am. And I think that's a better route to follow.
Yes, sir.
About those that want to speak, citizens, the opportunity to speak.
Okay.
So, we, we will consider this as a, not as a consent agenda, but individually.
Okay, sir.
To keep everybody on track, we're on 20, item 20-198A. And that's the only matter that we're considering at this time.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clark, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. The ordinance reads zoning amendment ordinance Z20-03.
And the first reading vote was 7-0. And in order to put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Good. We're now ready for our discussion. And Madam Clark, we both, we have both comments and speakers?
Yes, sir. We received comments from the public on item A and B together because they're together item. And we have one person that registered to speak, but I do not see her in the waiting room.
Who is that person?
Joanne Clark. But she did submit written comments that we can use for the record if you would like.
Okay. Well, let's, let's make sure. Is Joanne Clark in the waiting room? We're for sure that she's not.
I'm positive.
Okay, good. I think, any further discussion on A? Yes, sir. Councilman Glover, you've got your hand up.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd just like to add that I, I've heard from a number of citizens in the community of Sterling Cove that, that is adjacent to the project. I've also talked to some of my colleagues. There appears to be some confusion with the information that was supposed to be given to everyone in the community. I spoke to Mr. Horton, who is a part of the community board out in, in, in the Sterling Cove area. And I also spoke with Mr. Heatwall, who is, is one of the developers. And, and the conclusion was, after talking with some of my colleagues, based on the confusion with the citizens, we agreed that, and when I say we agreed, Mr. Heatwall and also Mr. Horton agreed that a, a scheduled meeting for everyone to come together to discuss the areas where there may be some confusion, to clear those areas up and then proceed with the vote at our next meeting would be advised. So, that's what I'm proposing tonight, that we defer this particular item into our next meeting where we give them an opportunity, the developer, to meet with the community again to answer the questions that they may have.
We have a motion on the floor. You, you have the right to either amend the motion or offer a substitute motion.
Right. So, I'd like to amend the motion and, and offer the substitute, with the amendment, well, to offer the
Substitute.
The substitute motion, right, excuse, can't get my words together. Offer the substitute motion to defer this vote into our next council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion, which is to defer the vote? Hearing none. This will be a roll, roll call vote. Madam Clark, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
No.
Ms. Simmons?
No.
Mayor Row?
I'm going to vote no because I think we're ready to move on this. But the motion passes, I believe.
Yes, sir, for three.
Okay. And so that is the substitute motion, which is to defer this to the next meeting.
Yes, sir, which would be October 27.
Okay. And everybody understands that that was.
No, I'm sorry.
It's the 13th.
I'm sorry, it's October 13th.
Yes.
Sorry.
We, we understood.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Okay.
And so because this was a substitute motion, it was in place of the original motion.
Correct.
All right. We're now at item B. And this is item 20-198D. And Madam Clark, will you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a use permit for UP 20-04 to Ripley Heatwall Company to, one, construct and operate a 192-unit multifamily apartment community at 5601 High Street, and two, construct and operate a 40-unit multifamily apartment community at 3109 Tyreneck Road.
Thank you. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, we need a motion. And as a point of order, it appears that we can't consider the resolution granting a use permit until the property is rezoned. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so the motion, the proper motion would be to defer this item until October the 13th.
Yes, sir.
Is there such a motion?
So, move.
Is there a second? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. We're ready for the question. This will be an oral roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye opposed, nay. Madam Clark, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. And we did have one speaker. Is that the same speaker?
Yes, sir.
If, if you could inform that speaker that this matter will come up on the 13th and the speaker is welcome to speak.
Will do.
Okay. We're at item 20-198C. And that's the consideration of a certain ordinance. And this matter is on its second reading. And Madam Clark, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Zoning Amendment Ordinance Z20-02.
In order for us to consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? And Madam Clark, I show no speakers for this item.
That is correct.
We're ready for the question then. And this will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye when your name is called, nay if you oppose. Madam Clark, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. We're at item 20-198D, which is the consideration of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clark, will you read the caption of this ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Chapter 40.1 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, pertaining to zoning for the purpose of adding casino gaming establishment to Section 40.1-8.3, Definitions Modifying Table 40.1-4.1A Use Table to Permit a Casino Gaming Establishment Use Permit and Establishing a New Section 40.1-3.7D to Authorize the Creation of an Entertainment Overlay District.
Thank you. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
So, move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for the discussion. And Madam Clark, we do have one speaker, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We have a registered speaker.
Is that speaker ready to speak?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mark Godoldiky Troski and Mr. Jones will release him to speak.
Sir, you have the floor and you have three minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. We're ready for discussion and Madam Clark.
Mr. Godoldiky Troski?
Yes, ma'am.
You can speak at this time. You have three minutes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, audible numbers of council and fellow interested parties. I have previously commented on this item when it was in the first reading stage. And I normally do not take a second bite of the apple, but because of the current circumstances in which we find ourselves and not having had an opportunity to address it in real time, but only by comments that were written out and said in ahead of the actual conversation, I wanted to take advantage of today's opportunity to speak to it directly in order. I have opposed the process by which this zoning change and, and use has come about. I feel that it is premature before the citizens of this city have had an opportunity to make their wishes known by means of a referendum, to be moving forward to establish a use that may not be required. And by your adoption of this particular resolution, you will be issuing implicit directions to have that added to our codes. In the event that the referendum failed subsequently, there will be no need for that sort of change to exist within our existing codes. So, I believe it's premature. I also believe that implicitly is an assertion to the public, which has not acted on this, that it is going to pass, that it is an inevitability, and it will all discourage some of my fellow citizens from casting a vote on it because it's, it's considered to be a done deal and there's nothing that, that their vote will change in the exercise of that franchise. So, for those two reasons, I am opposed to your adoption of this item and I urge you to reject it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clark, to be, for the record, this will be made part of our minutes.
Yes, sir.
Plus any comments that we have received.
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Any further discussion by members of council? Hearing none. We're ready for the question, which is to adopt the ordinance. And if you're in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye, oppose, no. This will be a roll call, oral vote. Madam Clark, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. We come now to, and Madam Clark, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. We come now to item 20-2018, which is the consideration adoption of a certain ordinance. Madam Clark, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance appropriating the necessary funds to implement the General Fund and Risk Management Fund of the FY 2021 Portsmouth Public Schools Budget for the second quarter of fiscal year 2021.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Any speakers, Madam Clark?
No, sir.
We're ready for the question. This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, oppose, nay. Madam Clark, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Row?
Aye. And Madam Clark, that motion carries?
Yes, sir, 7-0.
We're at item 20-2019, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. Madam Clark, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting projects for assistance in transition from homelessness path program funds in the amount of $1,813 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2021 Grants Fund for use by the Department of VHS.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Again, this will be a roll call vote. If you're, if you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, oppose, nay. Madam Clark, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're at item 20-220, which is the consideration of another ordinance and its adoption. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding from the Virginia Department of Social Services in the amount of $4,200 and appropriating said amount in the FY 2021 Social Services Fund for the Family Partnership Meeting Incentive Program.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, we're ready for the question. This will be an oral roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, oppose, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye.
And Madam Clerk, are we not at item 20-221?
Yes, sir.
Which is the consideration, the adoption of a ordinance accepting a certain grant and appropriating the money? And would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $31,831 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2021 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to deter driving under the influence of alcohol.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion? This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, oppose, nay. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're at item 20-222, which is the consideration of the adoption of a ordinance relating to a grant. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $8,058 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2021 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to increase usage of occupant restraints in vehicles.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded that we adopt this ordinance. Any discussion on the ordinance, on the motion? Hearing done, we're ready for the consideration of the question, which is to adopt. And this will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, oppose, nay. And Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're at item 20-223, which is the consideration of the adoption of another grant related ordinance. Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $22,120 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office and appropriating said funds in the FY 2021 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to deter speeding.
Thank you, ma'am. In order to put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, we're ready for the question. A roll call vote, oral. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, oppose, nay. And Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. And Madam Clerk, that motion is adopted?
Yes, sir. Seven zero.
We're now at item 20-224, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a Project Safe Neighborhoods grant in the amount of $27,000 from the Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police and appropriating said funds in the FY 2021 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, we're ready for the question. If you're in favor of the motion, this will be a roll call vote. Please indicate by saying aye when your name is called, oppose, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're now, and that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
We're now at item 20-225, which is the consideration of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution supporting offshore wind development off the coast of Virginia.
So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Good. We now are ready for discussion. And we do have comments that have been submitted, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. It was basically a form letter submitted by several people, and I listed their names underneath the same letter. So yes, sir.
And that will be made part of our home of record?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And we're ready for discussion. And the chair recognizes Councilman Glover.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to say to my colleagues and folks that are associated with the offshore wind industry, I'm excited about offshore wind becoming a port, having Portsmouth as the center of an industry that will provide good jobs, tax revenue, and clean energy is a win-win for all parties. And we're grateful that we're going to be seeing that come real soon.
Any further discussion? Hearing done, we're ready for the question, which is the adoption of this resolution. This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, which is to adopt, please indicate by saying aye, oppose, nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're now at item, Agenda Item 20-226, which is the consideration of a certain resolution and its adoption. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the relocation of a water line easement in favor of the city located on property in Chesapeake owned by Churchill and Ventures LLC.
Yes, sir. So that we can put this matter before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Done it. Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, which is to adopt the resolution. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, we're ready for the question. This will be a roll call oral vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye, oppose, nay. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. We're now at New Business and Item 20-227, which will put at the end of the agenda. That's the consideration of appointments, boards, and commissions. And we're now then at Item 20-228, item submitted by a city council. And we have before us the consideration of the adoption of a certain resolution. Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing and directing the City of Portsmouth to engage in collective bargaining with employees.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Now that we have a motion that's been duly made and seconded, we're ready for discussion. And we do have a speaker, do we not?
Yes, sir.
And will you invite the speaker into our meeting?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mark Adolde Kiotrowski?
Sir, you have a question?
Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow interested parties. As somebody who, somebody who was raised in a union family, I did not expect to be making this particular argument at any time, but I'm concerned that there are some constraints that the City of Portsmouth experiences, the fiscal constraints that it experiences, that would put us in a disadvantaged position going into a collective bargaining agreement with our public employees. I would like for the city to take a long look at the experience of other communities in other places, because this is a new consideration for the Commonwealth of Virginia as a whole. I would like us to look at what experience other communities where collective bargaining agreements have been in place and see what sorts of benefits and disadvantages the localities thus situated have experienced. I believe that we have the potential to raise expectations among employees about what this will and will not do. And I suspect that we lack the fiscal strength to be able to negotiate in good faith with employees regarding their salary and benefits. So I would ask you to take a, to defer this item and to take time to reissue thoroughly before moving forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt? Hearing done, we're ready for the question. This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye when your name is called, nay if you're opposed. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark? You're muted, sir. Councilman Clark, you're muted.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Semus?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. And that motion carries. I do have an item. It's both a recognition of an excellent job well done and a request, a suggestion to council. I think our registrar, Delora Short, has done an exceptionally excellent job in preparing for this election. Under the circumstances of COVID-19, all the controversy about how people vote, she has come up with a plan that is workable and meets the needs of the public to keep them both safe and healthy and meet their right to vote. And she's done an excellent job. And my request is that council concur with the direction that the city manager work to meet any needs in the future as it relates to this election. Second, in talking with Delora Short today, she indicated that several candidates had asked if they could put up signs outside City Hall, now that City Hall is a polling station. And if it's the consensus of council, can we direct the city manager to designate an area, and it could be two areas, in that grassy strip between the seawall and the surface parking lot on the east side of the jail, something maybe 20 feet by 40 feet or whatever the appropriate dimensions would be. On that grassy knoll with the requirement that people can put campaign signs up, yard signs for their candidates, but no earlier than 8 o'clock in the morning, and they have to be taken down at 5 o'clock. So this would be a daily procedure. And if you could find an appropriate spot on the west side, that would work. Is there a consensus that we direct the city manager to do that? Anybody got any heartburn about that? I don't know if yours is a thumbs up, Councilman Glover, or a question?
I have a question, Mayor.
Okay. Sir, you got the floor.
Yeah. No heartburn, and I concur with your comments about the registrar and her team. Excellent job, as always. And she and her staff are to be commended for that. No heartburn, but I know that I was out there as a candidate for local office, and I saw where the signs were moved from the right-of-way areas. And the reasoning was because they were in the right-of-way. And we do all know that signs are not in the right-of-way. My issue with that is because it is a polling place, those grassy areas close to certainly the entrance into the complex to vote, they are within the 40-feet range. They're not encroaching on the line that was put out there so that we wouldn't, candidates would not violate that line in there before you even climb on the stairs. So I like the idea about the grassy knoll, but I know that there were signs placed in that right-of-way. And also, I like the idea, and I certainly support the idea because we don't want it to look bad, is that they go out before 8 o'clock and they're picked up after 5 o'clock on a daily basis. So that's the compromise that I would like to see, and I would be more than happy to support a consensus in that regard.
Good. The chair recognizes Councilman Battle and Councilman Clark. Councilman Battle, you have the floor. Councilman Battle, you have the floor.
I know that it can be done, but I, I don't think we're set up to have the signs because of the number of candidates that we have. We just don't have the area down there to put several signs, three, four, five signs. I think it's not a good idea because of the number of candidates we have.
Thank, thank you. And actually, I should have said, this would be one, one sign per candidate, given the limitations on space, particularly on the, the west side of the building. Councilman Clark.
That was going to be my statement too, as far as the one sign, but I think we also need to say one yard size, so people aren't bringing large ones down there. So that way it would be consistent with the smaller signs. So with as many people running for the different offices would have the ability to put a sign there.
Yeah. I think we have a consensus, Mr. Pace, if you could designate two areas and clearly marked that would stakes in maybe some type of marking string or otherwise rope. You all decide what's best. One sign per candidate on both the east side and the grassy area between the seawall and the surface lot that our people are using to, to vote, to park to vote in an appropriate spot on the west side.
Exactly.
Okay. And with the stipulation that signs cannot go up earlier than eight, you have to come down to five. And again, in the United States, the, the voting process is the threshold to our democracy. It's, it's what we go through in order to have a democracy that works. And I'm just, I, I can't say enough good things about what Dolores Short has done to, to make this a very workable election. And again, give her, give her at least a virtual hug when you see her.
Mr. Mayor.
A job well done. Mr. Battle.
I'd like to say that all Norcom graduates have the same aptitude as she does.
An oversight, an oversight on that part. Thank you. Any other items?
I do have a question.
Me?
Yes, I do have a question, Mayor. So how soon are we going to know this and how will it be relayed to all of the candidates there who are participating?
That's a very good question. Can we do it as early as nine o'clock in the morning? Can you get the areas done?
Yes, we can. Mr. Baldwin and I will try to get with the registrar to get information where we can call them and let them know that. And then we'll follow up, follow it up with a letter so that they can get it in the mail.
Okay. I think it'd be a stretch to say it would be done by eight o'clock in the morning, by nine o'clock.
Right.
Okay. Everybody here, the city manager. Good point.
Mayor.
Any other items?
I got one.
You have report on pending items. Now you have a question on this.
Yeah.
Okay, please.
Well, not a question, but I just want to give out kudos to our staff as well. Mr. Baldwin and his entire team that worked with the registrar's office to make sure that it was a safe environment and that it's a workable environment. They've done a yeoman's job in terms of making sure that everything is covered and all the signage is done. So I'd like to thank our team for assisting her as well.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing it up because it really has been a team effort.
Yes.
Report on pending items, Mr. Pace.
I have none, ma'am.
Okay. We come now to non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
We have two, sir.
Okay. I'm going to let you call the speakers because I don't have their names, but we also have comments too. How many comments do we have?
Uh, I can tell you in one second. We have two registered comments that were emailed in.
Well, we're now ready for the speakers that have signed up. And Madam Clerk, will you call them in the order that you have?
Yes, sir. I only see one online. The other is probably trying to get up here. The first speaker is Mr. Sergio Neil.
Sir, you have three.
Release him.
You have three minutes, Mr. Neil.
Mr. Neil, star six. He's got to dial star six to unmute himself.
I see one online. The other is probably trying.
Hello, yes, hi, this is Sergio Neil and thank you for the instruction on how to unmute my phone. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak. I just wanted to go on it with my point. I'm quite sure all of you all have seen the perception of the city as it has been dragged out through the media in recent times with all of the things that have happened in our city that has been highlighted to be the negative and to be the headlines of all news media, including international. I, I will ask all of you to take a hard look at the decisions coming up and the actions that you all take from now until the end of some of you all's terms or whatever the case might be for some of you and then for some of you who are continuing on into the further years to do the same. I think right now we owe the citizens of Portsmouth a big apology for some of the things that have occurred under the purviews of our, of this current leadership. And whether or not you feel that you own it or not, that's between you and yourself and God. However, all of the citizens right now are holding each, including myself, are holding each and every one of you accountable. You know, we, you know, Portsmouth has a lot of potential and a lot of good people and a lot of good places. But when we constantly see the negative in the news media, that, that starts to shine a dim light on this city. And I, I think it's unfair to all of us as citizens to have to absorb the brunt of what we see in the media. I, I think that somebody having to make a disclaimer as to say, you know, the actions of the people involved in this news story are not to be used to judge the entire city of Portsmouth and its citizens is sad. And that's what I had to do on a comment that was on a news story that was posted by Waver. You know, I, I really think that from now on, you know, I, I get that things have to happen in this city when certain situations take place. But there, like, you know, what was always told to me, especially, you know, at home and in school, there is there is a time and place for everything. And if we're going to use our time and place as leaders effectively, I think it would be wise to make sure that we are making conscious decisions and taking action that benefits all of Portsmouth and not just some of Portsmouth. You know, right now we have a situation where, you know, nobody in their right mind would probably want to move here considering what they've seen in the news. You know, I, and honestly, I, I, I can only defend Portsmouth so much and I'm quite sure other people feel the same way. So I think at the very least, while we're giving out kudos to city staff and all that good stuff, which, which is perfectly fine, we need to also be giving out apologies to the citizens of the city of Portsmouth and some of the, the nonresponsiveness.
Mr. Neil, your time is, Mr. Neil, your time is up. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you.
Good. Our next speaker, please. We'll go through our speakers.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mark Adelde Kiotravsky.
Sir, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow interested parties. We are now just a couple of weeks away from the end of quarter three of the current fiscal year and we have not as citizens seen any report on the financial results of quarter two for the city. And this is a very important quarter because it is a quarter in which, according to national experts, there should have been some reflection in revenues and expenditures of the COVID virus pandemic. This has repercussions for us because we operate on a balanced budget. So if our revenues were severely deficient in second quarter, it carries over into the third quarter. The unbalanced expectations that, that may have been there when the, when the last year's budget was formulated may be disproven by actuality. So it is vitally important that the city deliver any timely manner, a report on our end of fiscal year status. The other thing I want to comment on is that it is an abuse of authority by city council to change the rules about speaking at the last minute with no notice to the people who will be speaking. I don't know what it is inherent in a virtual environment that makes our comments subject to having two minutes locked off of them just because of the format. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We're now at item 20-227, which is the consideration of appointments to boards and commissions. And we need a closed meeting. And Madam Clerk, will you read the motion?
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Are, are we going to talk about the council meeting location now or when we come back?
When we come back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's, let's take care of this and then we'll take care of that. All right. Madam Clerk, will you read the, the motion, please?
Yes, sir. A move to go into closed meeting, electronic meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3708.2A.3 and 2.2-3711.81 and City Council Ordinance 2020-21 for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for appointees to boards and commissions.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the motion. Is somebody ready to make that motion?
Move approval.
All right, may I? And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to go in the closed session that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye opposed nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Aye.
Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Ms. Simmons.
Aye.
Mayor Rowe.
Aye. We are going into closed meeting now and I'll ask the IT director to do what's technically necessary to make this a closed meeting.
I call the Portsmouth City Council back to order. We're coming out of closed session. We need a motion to certify per the provisions of the Freedom of Information Act. And will you read that motion for us to consider, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Just one quick second. There is a move that each council member certified that to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such business matters were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Who will make that motion so we can consider it?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye opposed nay. And Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle. Mr. Clark.
Aye.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Aye.
Mr. Moody.
Aye.
Ms. Simmons.
Aye.
Mayor Rowe.
Aye. Now we're at our last item on the agenda, which is to circle back to the briefing that we had on how to move forward with our meetings. We said that we're not interested in alternative four. The consensus was to implement three with modifications and to consider doing that for the second meeting in October. We wanted to go through the ninth meeting to see how the virtual, virtual speakers work. So I opened the floor up for a consensus discussion. What's your pleasure? We had, the question that we put forward was to continue tonight, the, the format of tonight's meeting for the 13th and consider, once we have all the questions that were identified during our discussion, doing alternative three modified for the second meeting in October. Is that still the consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Any heartburn? Nate, I, I, I'm seeing hands go up and the first one I saw was Councilman Clark. And sir, you've got the floor and Councilman Battle.
Um, after, you know, that's why I wanted to bring this back at the end to let that serve as a test. And I think the phone calls went very well. And I don't, I honestly don't see much of an advantage for the citizens to come down to the first floor if they have the ability to call in. I think it's still safer for us and the citizens as well to keep this platform. So this time I would, I would suggest continuing with, with what we're doing now, which is number one. I think it's safest for everybody going forward.
Okay. And Paul, that's what you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Okay. Good. Well, we've had a good, good night's discussion, good work on the part of everybody. And with that, I, to the public, thank you for your patience.
Mayor, we got the force.
Oh, we sure do. I'm sorry. We got to go back to boards and commissions.
Wait, wait, before we end that, I had a question.
About the meeting?
Right. I, I had a question as it relates to, I know we changed, we changed the time from five to three. Is that going to be the new rule going forward in terms of speaking time?
Well, it's up to council. It stands until we reverse it or change it.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that's what we have going forward.
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Can I speak, please?
You may.
Council members, we have been meeting at five and that's been for your regular We honestly need to have a five o'clock work session and then a seven o'clock meeting. And specifically for what we just discussed in closed session, I'm going to need that allotted time to set up some things. So if we could, even though we're going to stay virtual and people will be allowed to call in, if we could please go to back to the five o'clock timeframe for work session and seven o'clock for the meeting, that would be very helpful.
And you're recommending that for the 13th of October?
Yes, sir. It's my understanding that the ideal going forward is to continue with virtual and allow people to call in like they can tonight. So there, that would be the format for the 13th forward is five o'clock for public work sessions, seven o'clock for the meeting. 7:00 for the meeting, unless changed by the council at some point.
That's fine.
It gives us time to break, we have a meal, too.
Yeah.
Yeah. And if we need a closed session, we'll put that in between.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Moody, I saw your hand go up. Are you good?
No, I was going to suggest starting an hour earlier, but that might create problems. I'm fine with five.
All right, five. Let's take care of boards and commissions, and then we'll close out the meeting. We're back to consideration appointments to boards and commissions. Councilman Moody, do you have a motion?
I move that the following boards and commission appointments and reappointments be approved, behavioral healthcare services, appointment of Eric Perryman, Caitlin Sutherland, reappointment of Alicia Page, ballpark for zoning appeals, appointment of Shelley Carter Ford, community criminal justice board, reappointment of Dr. Rosalind Sanderson, she would be the school representative, downtown design committee, appointment of Roberta Hansel Daniel Moore, reappointment of Daniel Babcheck, Chekri Butts, Don Ripley, history commission, reappointment of Gracie Bowers, Betty Joe Griffin, Joseph McClure, library board, appointment of Meisha Clemmons, Ronnie Peterson, Shelley Riddell, Monica Holloman, Ashley McBride, museum and fine arts commission, appointment of Glenn Brooks, Regina McCoy, Joseph McClure, Tamika Nguyen, arts and recreation commission, reappointment of Laurel Armstrong, William Mars Flanger, appointment of Monica Holloman, Stephanie Liverman, Gracie Taylor, Portsmouth Courts and Industrial Commission, appointment of Dan Stevens, regional broadband authority, appointment of Laura Pace as alternate, social services advisory commission, reappointment of Gracie Bowers, Janine Taylor, appointment of Latoya Height, supplemental retirement board, reappointment of Laura Bealan. That's it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, we're ready for the question. This will be a roll call vote. If you're in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye, if you're opposed, no. Madam Clerk, will you call the vote, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Ms. Simmons?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. To restate and summarize the action that we took about the, our next meeting, we will have a work session that's virtual at 5:00 on October the 13th. We will need a closed session to do interviews of possible candidates to boards and commission. We'll have our regular meeting at 7:00. Okay. And then, Mr. Pace, you've got your homework assignment on the CARES Act. If you could bring that to the work session, please. Okay, everybody comfortable and good? Okay. This completes our agenda, and with that, I declare this meeting closed adjourned.